Tom.
Oh, this.
Tom.
Oh, good.
Perfect.
Hey, Tom.
Oh, hey, Tom. Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Man, you okay?
Oh, yeah.
Would you like to sit here?
Hey, would you get a table seat?
Are you gonna figure expansion on this? How've you been? Okay.
This meeting is being recorded.
That's it, Bill?
Yep.
At this time, I'd like to bring park and rec board members together for Tuesday, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Six.
Oh, three.
Okay. We have a rule call list, please.
Jay Vitaleco.
Here.
Richard De Silva.
Here.
Billy de Blasio. Eileen Frankolino.
Here.
Thomas Gill.
Here.
Tim Hubb Wagner. Anthony Koloski.
Here.
Matthew Koloski.
Here.
Ed Marshawn.
Here.
Nicole Payne. Don Woods.
Yeah.
And for our liaisons, Tim Anke. And Kim Rada.
Here.
Yeah.
Mister Chairman, you have a quorum.
Well, we were a little nervous there for a while. We were all pretty good. Okay, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the feedback. Don, you were always.
I was not having a second behind us.
What happened?
You were like.
We're getting the feedback, Don.
We, it was awesome that you, it was awesome you.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Can we have approval of the minutes?
Make a motion when you approve the minutes I submitted.
Is there any additions or contractions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Well.
Sure.
I make a motion to accept. Does somebody make a motion?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't hear. Aye.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Both.
What are you gonna do for a second?
Um, I did.
It's time to. Any public participation, patient? Yes, we got some trouble here.
Ladies first.
Oh, hi. I'm Allison Eisen. I'm here to represent my daughter and her friend who are at softball practice right now.
If you don't mind, would you also say your address, please?
Sure, I'm at one-twenty Clarendon Terrace. So I'm here to represent my daughter, Edlyn Eisen, she's nine, and her friend Sienna Mills, who's seven. They wanted to submit a thank you letter that says, thank you for our softball fields. We can't wait for the new batting cage. We're hoping that you'll help us with, and it will help us get better. So they wanted to submit this. I don't know if there's a secretary.
Yeah, Melissa will take it.
And to speak on my own behalf, I'm here as a coach who's running a practice. With my co-coaches are out there at Memorial Field right now, and we're super excited that Newington Little League voted to purchase a batting cage for the softball field at Memorial, and we're here to and get your help to put that field or that cage up. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, Matt Rossi, seventeen Franklin Circle. I am here too to talk about Memorial Field. The field is beautiful. It's a well-maintained field, it's one of the best fields we play on. And one of the things that I noticed when I was caught in a rainstorm at practice last week is the amount of water that runs off the dugouts. Especially the third base dugout runs off the back of the roof, then runs around the front entranceway of the dugout, then all the way out straight across home plate. And as, as I was looking at that roof, and I was looking at the roof of the third ba-, on the third base side of Legends, I was watching a large amount of water coming off the back of the roofs. So I was thinking, with a roof that's about twelve by thirty-nine feet tall of two feet, uh, width and length, and if it was a one-inch rainstorm, that breaks down to somewhere near two-hundred-and-ninety-one gallons coming off of just that roof with a one-inch. Now, if we were to put a gutter on the back of both of those and run a gutter that shoots it out the backside behind the fencing, that would take care of a large amount of water that's coming in front and across the home plate area, which is usually the most soupy-est on the field. It was just a thought, it was nothing I ever thought about until I watched the rain come down and just pour off it, and then actually had a chance to watch the water run around the dugout, all the way in front dugout, then right out through the door, right across home plate. It's just a suggestion. It's not an expensive fix. I don't know what the possibilities of it are. The second thing is the batting cage. Now, to make you have a better understanding of what we're looking for the idea. It is a batting cage very similar to what's over at Badger Field. And if you've ever seen the batting cage that's over at the high school for the girls, the NHS girls team, it's more like that. There is already an existing fenced-in area that is large enough to house a a batting cage. It's right now, we call it the pitching pen. It's right next to the first base dugout and foul line. If we were to extend the six poles, the one back which faces the woods and also faces Volunteer, and the other three poles that are facing the first base dugout, if we were to extend them four feet, we could run three wires across, and as we said, Little League is willing to purchase the supplies needed to make that happen. I'm looking and hoping that you guys would agree that it's not a large amount of money that could benefit a lot of programs. Example being, you can practice at the high school, but you can't bring a batting machine to practice hitting there. You can practice over at Patterson, but you can't bring a hitting machine over there. And as we found two weeks ago, when the fields were closed, but the batting cages were still available to use, we were lucky that Little League didn't have the, uh, you know, their majors didn't have a a practice. Because her miners, my majors, and the high school team are using all four of the existing. If we had that batting cage, it would allow us to have two teams practicing at Memorial. One would have an hour in the batting cage while the other takes an hour practice on the field, then halfway through we switch. Two teams can get in, get batting practice in, get fieldings in, and we're not trying to figure out how we're going to utilize hitting. It would be a shame to just put a batting machine on top of Memorial and use your batting that way. Whereas doing something that most of it's been purchased by Little League would benefit the program from the instructional leagues all the way up to the juniors. And this year, we had a U-15 team playing. That was a makeup of high schoolers and some of the middle schools. It, it's there. It's just three pipes need, six pipes need to be extended about four feet. Three wires need to be, and you would clip it up with a carabiner. And very similar to what's over at, again, very similar to what's over at Badger. And it would look very similar to what's over at high school. So it's kind of a hybrid of the high school and of Badger with very little, just mostly time.
I got a question from Matt.
Yes.
You're saying you're talking about the first baseline?
First baseline, yep.
How much will the effort fence today?
Not enough, not enough. There's not enough. That would be a bigger price. It would take longer to get that done. I don't.
Well, I don't know. I'm just worried about the wetlands now, you know?
Well, the cage is already there.
Yeah.
It's already fenced in. It's got, it's got pavement around, uh, three-quarters of it, or half of it. The other half is woods and but again, it's still an existing structure. It would not be anything new that's added. It would just be an extension. The cage could be pulled closed when it's not in use, so it still can be used as a pitching pen.
I'm just wondering if a better site would be along the third base site. You know, between the shed and the fence, you've got some grass.
Well, the problem with that is that's the, that's the highest viewing area for the parents. A lot of parents don't want to walk around the back. First off, there's no bleachers there. To put bleachers there, you would have to take the bleachers apart, build them in that spot. So financially speaking, in my mind, it's smarter just to extend the six poles, run it and put it there. It's out of the way. It can be used when it's needed. Two teams can use the field. When the field's closed, that area is usually pretty dry, dry enough to where you could run a hitting practice on that field, in that cage.
Now, you were talking about a bat machine. You have lots of.
And we have extension cord that is long enough to run from the dugout around the field to that area. So there's no wiring that would need to be done. And we've already have, you know, we've got the batting machine that just simply gets rolled into the door because there's a gate on both sides. We'd be able to get it in, pull it out, roll it in.
What happened to all the generators? They still got them?
I have no idea. That's a question I don't know. I've.
Cause I bought two generators for, well, one for Wallace.
But it's also, it's also just the feasibility of trying to bring a pitching machine out to Patterson and up to the high school where we have the pitching machine, one that.
Well, I understand plugging in is quicker and, you know.
Right.
You don't have to worry about putting gas in all that.
Right, right. And it would just be, again, it's, it's the most financially with the town.
Did you take a look at that bill? Doable?
Yeah, of course, everything's doable. Um, except I want a commitment of money.
Well, he's always talking about that.
Bill, I understand that completely. I was at the meeting two weeks ago. They said, and the president of softball, Mr. Phelps is here too. We could talk about that, that point of it. As a person who's coached at the high school level and been coaching for a full year, something like that would really raise the program and give the girls an opportunity to get a chance to practice their skills, both hitting and whatnot. And when there was a time where the field is too wet, as I said, that area is always dry. It's, it's always usable. So it would allow for softball to have a spot, the high school kids to have a spot, and Little League to have their spot.
Yeah, I'm not arguing the merit of it.
Oh, no, no.
That's it, yeah. Um, you have the netting already?
Well, the thing is, we need commitments. We'll buy it. He says he's, he's got prices for it, so.
Yeah, I can speak for that.
Good.
A few minutes. Thanks, Matt. So, yeah, so, um, my name's Mike Phelps and the vice president of softball for Newington Little League.
And your address, please.
Uh, one oh eight Tremont Street. Um, I, I have some prepared comments. Do you want me to finish up Matt's comments and then go on to that if that works? Okay, so just to finish up Matt's point, uh, we did allocate, uh, up to twelve hundred dollars last month at our, at the last board meeting to purchase the netting and, and materials for the batting cage. It really comes down to a question of, um, you know, labor to, to put up the poles to complete it. Uh, I'm just waiting for a, uh, to hear back from Will and the Britain Fence Company to figure out the cost of the poles to extend that. It's similar, like the poles, I believe now, I think are about six feet tall. So there's a couple of them to, uh, to Matt's point that have to get sleeved or extended to, uh, probably about ten to twelve feet. And then we would get the net and the cable in, just, you just hang it up and it would be similar. It's, as a hybrid design that he mentioned, it would have slotted in the cables to go back, kind of like Badger does in and out. But it would just be within the existing pitching pen by first base. What'd you get for prices for the net? Uh, the net really isn't too bad. It's around, it's, uh, total, put in there for poles. The net by itself, um, was like six hundred dollars and then cabling and, uh, bungee loops with it would be, uh, like other one to two hundred dollars. So it's not, it's, it's not that bad. I'm just waiting to hear from you back on, yeah, fencing prices. And you guys would take the netting down in winter? Yes, we would put it up. We would take it down. We would store it. Then in the minutes, please.
Bill, I, I got a question for you.
Go on, when your kids grow up, I'll be there.
This means that you, you have to go in there and put stuff stone in there, right?
There's already stone.
There is already stone.
Is there?
Yeah, there's already stone.
See, that's how long since I've been here.
Yeah, I know, I know.
What do you use, a net screen right now or?
Well, right now, when we do use it, it's the, uh, square net with a hole. A machine shoots through the middle of it. But you can't use that space for hitting. We have to use it on the field. So the idea is to make practice more optimal for two teams at the same time. Um, so that when we do have these rain, rainouts, a team can get in at least hit. And even forty-five minutes of hitting and forty-five minutes on the field would equal our one hour, our hour and a half practice.
And when everything's wet, bringing an extension cord is still safe?
Oh, yeah, because you can run it, you can either run it around the blacktop, all the way around the back, and you're all outdoor extension cords, so there's nothing that we need to worry about. Um, you know, the biggest puddles that we ever run into is at home plate, and now I see why. Um, I do have pictures. I'll have to send them to you, Bill, of the running that you can see coming from where I'm talking about. That we could definitely get it done. It's just we need to, we need the, we need the netting to keep the balls from going into the woods. Um, is what it is at this point.
Matt, getting back to the water end of it, do we ever had that problem before?
I don't remember that big of a problem.
Something come up?
I don't know. I don't remember that big of a problem. But, uh, not like this. I mean, I've never been there. We had the downpour that was occurring, and that downpour happened on Thursday. I was lucky to get a half-hour practice in before it started to downpour. But the amount of water that came down on Thursday, even by three-thirty on Saturday, home plate was still wet. And it was still that same path. It goes right across.
The other, I understand you're gonna have a, you know, no grass there. That's, that's one of your problems.
Correct.
When it, when it infuse.
Correct, absolutely. I'm just thinking two-hundred and something gallons of water being, two-hundred and something gallons of water being, um, moved away does help out a little bit.
And I just want some pictures from the, uh.
I, I don't see anything wrong with, you know, putting dusters. It's just where do you run the water?
Well, the, the good thing is the dugouts are far enough outside the fence that if you run it towards the woods, run it down and put a little bit of a longer black tube at the end of it, it will run and it will follow the curb. There's a curb there. But it's gonna follow it, and that water's just gonna keep running because it's pitched that way towards the woods. So that would be a, that would be.
Yeah, I, I can't remember having a problem with water.
Well, last year, I don't remember.
Something's changed there, you know?
I don't remember water getting inside the storage room either. But this past summer and past fall, we've gotten good rains. We now have water getting into that storage area.
Storage room?
Yeah, so something, something's happened, something's changed. Um, that has definitely changed before that water.
Matt, when are you looking to have this done by the spring or?
I'd love to have it done by April. Not looking for tomorrow. I'm not looking for December. I'm looking by April, so it's not like it's.
And just for the record, Jim Traumer, the president of the Little League, is not here. Is that on purpose or?
No, no, he told us, we, at the meeting, I'm like, well, can I go speak to the park and rec board about it? He said, yes, you can. And I said, okay. I asked him permission because I, you know, we kind of knew the, the most about it. We've been there, we live it. Jim comes and sees it, but he doesn't actually understand what we're thinking because we're using it. We're using it every day or whenever we have practice. Um, so.
And take a peek at it and see and we'll come up with something. You, you'll give me Willie's prices and the netting, what company you're dealing with and all that kind of stuff and put a budget together and then put the whereabouts of how to do it and then we'll see, you know, when we can do it. I can't promise April, but we can try. Okay, yeah, I, I can handle all that. Um, I also have, uh, photos from one of the heavier rainstorms. That was a couple of weeks ago. I went down there during the, the middle of it when it was pouring, and you can see all the water come in through the gravel and down in front of the, the dugout by third base and kind of out across the mound, so I can, I can share those. Cause all that, all that nice dirt, edge dirt is eventually getting washed out the backside down the hill. So we're just looking to try to, um, try to save that. Additionally, you also mentioned.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so additionally, as I mentioned, my name's Mike Phelps. Um, I live on Tremont Street. I'm a parent and a coach of teams who's in town over the past five years. I'm, I'm also currently, uh, vice president of softball on the Newington Little League Board. I have a son, daughter in sports on the fields up at Columbia and several other fields within town. And, you know, I have to say, the fields have always been prepped well, especially where we hold games. And it has been great to see several of them renovated over the past few years. I don't want to let that go unnoticed. I know there's a lot of investment and time spent, spent to do that, and it really has been a phenomenal change. Uh, including up at T-ball now, uh, recently, and Patterson Upper, so the upper field at Patterson behind the school. Uh, I really hope that trend continues when constructions finish at Reynolds. So that field that was lost to Custer returns as we see usage and demand grow and really continue to exceed uh, field availability during the, the season. This is something Sam's here. Um, he can like attest to that as we ask for, who put in field use permits for NHS. Even though the softball fields are available at, at NHS, it's very hard to get time, to get time on there because they're not available until six PM, so when you have a lot of younger kids or even some of the older kids with, um, other activities after school, try to, try to get practice in before dark between really six and eight, which is pretty late, for seven to nine-year-olds, it, it's hard to make the soft, uh, make the high school fields work. Uh, you know, a- as is mentioned, even in the heaviest rain spells with all the fields that happen, you know.
Is high school not cooperating to leave by five-thirty?
Uh, I was told it was six. I haven't tried to push the, the five-thirty time. I, I know Coach Marky very well, so I, I can ask him when that's been a date. Typically, there's been practices all the time. Or traditionally, they've been their timer games, so we kind of use six as, as the start. I could try to do.
So we, we've used with the athletic director, Chris Myers, it's five-thirty for high school sports.
Okay.
And youth sports comes on after that. We say six o'clock so that there's a half-hour grace period, so we don't, guys don't argue and fight, but um, it's supposed to be five-thirty.
Okay, okay. That's, uh, that's good to know. Uh, I will say like even, you know, even when the heaviest rain spells and everybody has to mow all of the fields and all the fields up there aren't down, there's a lot of them. You know, the grass lid gets cut, the pail lines are painted, the batter boxes are lined. Um, while we do occasionally have an issue or two with watering, um, with that new sand mix, it's, it's definitely been addressed. It's been very nice to play on when it's prepped and watered. Uh, it's really, I, I have to say, it's really been inspiring to see the kid spaces when we schedule night games. Having a few games under the lights is a few, is a, a really fun opportunity that a few other surrounding towns are able to offer. So that's been great, uh, great to have. We always get a lot of compliments from our visiting teams when they, when they come, uh, to play at Memorial. Uh, unfortunately, until they're asked about restroom facilities. And that's just the one thing with that one porta potty, especially during high demand times, like we were there uh, this past weekend, and there were all three fields were going, uh, as well as people at the skate park and the turf field for, uh, football or cheer lacrosse or something. That's like three hundred people there over a couple of hours. So it's just very busy, uh, with, without a lot, without a lot of restroom facilities. And there's also no longer any, any running water at the, at the softball concession stand. I guess the water line that had run through when the, um, was broken at some point, I think when the post went in for the sun shades or the park. There's no water there. I don't know if there's plans to.
You're kidding.
At some point.
No one ever addressed that?
I, I, I don't know. I've heard of it. Yeah, I don't know if it came up before and on. No, it's hard, because sometimes it's hard to know. It's like, we don't know how to control any of the sprinklers. Usually I'll, I'll mention something to Sam or, or to Jim to bring to, to clay. And I think nobody really knew the water line was, was broken. I think they just thought it was blown out and shut off. And then it's like, oh, can we turn this on? It's like, no, it's, it's apparently it's leaking somewhere or, or just broken.
Well, who said it was broken?
I believe it's broken because it's never, it's never turned on.
Who do, who blows out the water?
We do.
Used to be Lester, Lester, right? In the old days.
Tom.
Tom, up here. Well, wouldn't Tom know that the, the thing is cracked?
Like I said, it's the first ever, so.
Yeah, me too. That's, that's odd. I mean, you know, if it's broken, it should be fixed.
You're saying irrigation pipes? Uh, I don't know. It's, it's, it's off a water spigot into the shed at, uh, at between Legends and Memorial.
It's the shed, is the water used?
Well, it's just water spigot outside, so it's watering. I'm assuming it's, it's potable drinking water as well.
Yeah, we used to use it for the concession stand and watering on the side of the building.
Yeah, it's not working and I feel like.
Well, someone ought to fix it because, you know, they put a lot of money in that thing and I'm surprised. I'm very surprised. I didn't know it said anything.
Okay.
Even Traumer should have said something.
He may not have, he may not have known, right? We have, um, we haven't had a lot of strong leadership from softball.
Well, that's right now. Aren't you guys sep-, aren't they separated?
No, we're still part of the league.
Junior baseball I'm talking about.
Ju-, uh, junior baseball is, is, is different.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. The old days, it used to be all in one package. Now they're separated. So apparently, you know, Traumer don't really care about the end of the field.
I, I wouldn't say that's a, that's a correct answer. I, you know, he does ask anything I have asked him for, for for softball, he's, he's gotten. And I think the, the one thing with the water, he was, um, you know, brought it up and just, just sharing that here, here as well as something that.
Well, I think we ought to get that fixed, Bill. What do you think?
Sure, take a look at it.
Yep.
Uh, you know, cause really there's now, there's, there's no water fountain. There's no water bottle bill station, so having drinking water there would, would be, uh.
Well, that was the reason it was really put in, you know, to have water at that end of the park.
Gotcha.
We'll look into it.
Okay, thanks. Uh, I have read the Parkmaster Plan from two thousand and seven, and I was wondering if there's any plans to look at modernizing and potentially, um, improving some elements at Columbia in the future. And I'd have, I'd be happy to help facilitate a meeting between, uh, Little League's executive board and Parks and Rec and a long-term strategy, as well as speaking on any related CIP proposals, either to the town, uh, either to the town manager or the, uh, town council. Cause, you know, a- as we know, the pandemic is over. More and more kids are returning to sports. Uh, as noted in a recent article this past Monday, October tenth, in the Heart of Current, uh, Mr. De Mayo, you were quoted in the article regarding some of the work, great work that's been done in town and your excitement at the higher participation rates. So I was looking to see what the, the board's long-term plans are to address field demands uh, and continuing improvement. It's really overall, not just one sport specifically. And that was it. And really just want like a heartfelt thank you to all of the staff that maintain and prep the fields. I do talk to them when they're there, when I, if I catch them there early on Saturday mornings, um, to really just thank them. I mean, the fields are, they really are phenomenal where we play them.
I'm getting a feeling, listen, you talked, you have, you're looking for more fields apparently.
I, I think, I think long-term, that's the right strategy for the town, whether it be soccer fields, baseball fields, T-ball fields. I mean, there's, there, there is a, you know, there's a, a high demand coming into sports and it's getting hard to schedule and balance between all the different teams and those limited windows, even if it was five-thirty. Five-thirty to eight-thirty is not a lot of time for a couple of teams.
What you lost is McCusker.
Yep.
About center, is that still?
Center is open. Center is very small, so center is not big enough to play softball.
Young, young kids.
Yeah, correct.
What else did you lose?
Oh, we can practice at Patterson, but we can't host games there. It's not game regulated because there's no fencing or bleachers.
Oh, really? Great parking, because it's, it's, it's up there. McCusker had parking and bleachers.
A lot of people can practice there. We can't schedule games.
There's, there's no longer a field at, um, Amanda Christian Academy. That used to, I believe.
Yeah, that's right.
Those are soccer fields now. There's a small baseball field at Wallace, but that's not fenced and that's, it's not skinned for, for softball. That would just be a baseball field. So really it was Patterson Upper, uh, McCusker and Memorial and the, the two high school fields based on availability, but there aren't, um, I think there's only one set of benches at the JV field and no dugouts.
See, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out the numbers. What do you, do you have a number?
We're at a hundred. Hundred was, hundred kids, hundred girls from, that wasn't including the, um, the, that's not including the kids from the summertime that new kids came. the, that's not including the kids from the summertime that new kids came.
I looked the numbers up.
Oh, you have.
Yeah, so so for this year, uh, we've held uh so spring, summer and fall. So that's April, like say April 15th when the fields are open through October 31st. We have, we have held 102 events at Memorial. Um, it's been 100 and roughly 100 and 100 hours under with lights on at Memorial. And we've had a total of 128 girls across 11 teams.
That's not to mention the 99 T-ball players, that female players on that level coming up that registered for last spring. So they're coming, those 99 kids.
Yeah, but as as Allison mentioned, that's 100 kids.
See, I'm just, I'm just going backwards. One time we we used to have something like 287 girls playing softball. And I'm trying to figure out, I know we lost a couple of fields, but we didn't really lose any softball fields. Right?
Well, you lost the the other major one that you lost was um Elm Hill.
Or whatever.
Yeah. Christian, that one was one of the other softball fields that was there. And then I think softball at times would use the one at Reynolds.
Well, let me ask you this, Matt.
Yeah.
Is just the majors play at Memorial?
No, everybody tries to use Memorial as much as possible.
That's why you're all boxed up.
It's the only playable game ready field because of the fencing and the safety.
That's why you're boxed up.
Right, and and in that that extra, that that batting cage can allow for things to happen that would.
Two bugs will go in one.
Yeah, and you can do it without one stumbling over the other because it has an entrance from one side. It doesn't have to enter from the field. You can enter from the outside in and still be able to run everything you need to do um with it, so.
What do, what are we using uh um Patterson for? Are they still doing T-ball there too?
Yes.
Yes, there they have.
The lower or the?
Uh, T-ball is on lower with the some of the recently replaced backstops.
Okay.
Uh, T-ball has also been scheduled in games up at Patterson because that was uh fixed and screwed up earlier in the spring. Mr. De Mayo, and also the backstop will also be replaced. But there are um, there are not benches or really fencing to protect the benches if there were benches there of that Patterson for for game because the T-ball kids love it. They come out there, they play against each other and it's like they they think they're going to the Argo Stadium.
Yeah, I'm just trying to run through my mind here. Uh, Matt.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Who plays there?
Uh.
No girls, right?
No girls, but it's it's not suited because of the mound. Um, I mean, they're used to way back in the day.
I mean, do the boys use it that much? I mean.
Yes, the boys do.
You got a way of, way these.
Especially in the spring.
Because if you remember back when Memorial Field was put in, it was called grass.
Well, it was originally what we call, it was originally softball.
Strictly the softball.
Hey, Jay, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, the animals, and you guys, we get it. Which.
Jay.
And the field's fantastic. I'm just looking for one little thing to allow us to prepare the girls and give them an opportunity.
Do we have any, let's finish that one.
Don, go ahead.
Hey, Jay, I hate to interrupt, but Ed and I have to leave. Can we pause this conversation and get to the two items that we have to vote on?
Yes.
If you, let's go, can I make, I'm sorry, guys, to interrupt, but um.
We'll go back here.
Okay, if I can, if I can make a motion. If I can make a motion to move item nine, move business.
Yeah, very good. For listening.
Up to the next item on the agenda. Get somebody second that.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Post.
Okay, I'm I'm sorry, we really have to get going. So if we can take these two votes and then we are, you guys are good to go. We don't have another, we don't have enough six when Ed and I go, right?
We do.
Yeah.
You do?
We do.
Then no problem. All right, then, uh, I rescind my motion.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, guys, but Ed and I have to go.
Okay, all right.
Night.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, guys.
All right.
Okay.
Where were we? Uh, you're talking about Wallace.
Yep.
So Wallace is used a lot during the springtime um with the boys. I'm not sure if it's the immediate level, which level it is, but there's always going on there in the springtime. Um, and, you know, we we have utilized, we have utilized as the junior program, we have used the high school. But again, the problem is we can't practice hitting unless we're at Memorial. Um, whereas again, you know, it's one little thing, not a huge budgetary thing. They've set money aside to have it done that would benefit and help with the crowding of the fields.
So you, I guess what you're saying, if you get the batting you can solve a lot of your problems.
We get the batting cage, we can.
Because trying to find another field is like.
And that's it. And I remember this conversation when they got rid of the soccer field.
Yep.
And I don't know if part of getting rid of the soccer field over there and putting in Legends was why they chose to give soccer um Elm Hill.
I don't know who did that.
So, I mean.
That was after me.
Yeah, so, I mean, over time, you even thought about even Chafie at one time, maybe some teams at Chafie. That's no longer there.
So just.
E-Green's gone.
Just for I'm clear, the, if you're going to buy the netting and have Willie do the piping and pay for it, what do we have to do? I guess.
So so the thought was, I haven't gotten a quote from Will for the fencing. So I thought maybe it would be like more of a supply material if he does apply the labor to put the pipe in. And that was my thought there. I I haven't.
Yeah, we're not going to do fencing.
Okay. Then I.
That's all Willie.
Okay, then I'd have to go see and see when he calls and when he returns my call and get a quote to 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 see what that is because I don't have any idea what those numbers are.
Why don't you call him tonight and tell him to return your call?
The other thing too, we didn't know where the boundary was between what was town work, what was can be done by a private group is the other reason.
We don't either. We're going arbitration with nine cases, so uh we'll know in the next few months, I guess.
And and I, you know, add just to add for at Wallace at the baseball field that is minors and intermediate baseball teams to play there as.
Yep.
As well.
Well, any other suggestions?
Not a suggestion, just a, um, Bill, do we have a long range plan? Is, are they involved with?
The answer is no, no, really. I mean, we haven't gone by that long range plan that was done in 2007. Um, it's, most of it is irrelevant. Things have changed since 2007.
I think the big thing, Tom, is the numbers have dropped over the years, so. You know, I never knew we had a problem with the numbers even dropping, you know, so. It's the first time I'm hearing about it.
Well, minors are going back up, which is good.
Yeah, oh, that's good. Yeah, you're right.
Um, that's it. We're just trying to, you know, again, trying to solve problems the least, most financially physical way possible to get these girls to be able, I mean, to try to get them ready to compete at the high school level with some of the teams that they have to play.
Let me ask you this, Matt.
Yes.
Are you getting any help from Trauma?
I don't, I don't do a lot with that. That's a question for him. I I, you know.
Yeah, so, yes, I mean, yeah, yes, yes, we do, right? We we have registration, we have sponsorships for um for softball, well, it's baseball and maybe, you know, anything I've asked for, I need.
What I'm really asking you is, can he put this in the budget for spring?
I I would say we have already allocated money to cover the netting and the supplies to hang the net. I'm waiting to go through and see the fencing boards, see what it's like. I personally have never priced fencing out before, so I'm just.
Well, if it's something like that, it's going to be expensive, right, Bill? It's small.
Well, it's going to be expensive.
You just said poles, you didn't say justice.
Correct, it's like fence, like fencing poles, I could look that. I've looked at some commercial, um, sorry, some residential places and obviously that's not the same. So I'm just waiting to hear back from uh from a few fencing companies just to see. Right, so I I I can't speculate on on those costs, especially how much things have changed with uh, like you were last year.
Yeah, a lot of this, I mean, uh, staff hasn't had the chance to, you know, it it sounds like that they haven't heard about it.
Right.
You know, and I I think, you know, coming to us, you know, you know, that's all well and good, but staff has to be involved with this, you know, for them to, you know, get answers, you know. Uh, coming to us, you know, it's it seems as though that they should have been contacted first and and dealt with, you know, and so they could have the answers for for us.
Now, this is a policy board. And then and the administration has done through us, so, but it's okay. It's, we got to where we want to be.
I think it's great all the hard work you guys are doing and it's nice to see that the girl sports are growing and it's nice to hear positive feedback about what the department is doing to help you guys out and that's always great to hear.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, especially, I mean, all the field improvements are.
Yeah.
They have been phenomenal over the years.
Yes.
It's great to see that happen and and continue to happen and.
Again, and I'm willing to talk with the athletic director and the coaches. Um, yes, that's, it's it's critical that high school gets off on time. Now, if they have a game, I get it, you know, if they go into extra innings or something like that, we have that agreement at Legends for baseball. But other than that, we have to allow um middle school and high school baseball to play, start their games at six o'clock. Otherwise it'll get dark and they won't get their games in. You should be no different than boys sports.
And 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 again, you know, this was something that had come up last year. And it was, all right, you know, we don't want too many people talking to Park and Rec is not a good thing. Um, and, you know, they're like, there's chain command, you got to new the chain. These people are the only people that should be calling Park and Rec. So I it was funny, I got the AOK to bring this up to you and I wasn't sure if I'm helping I pick up the phone and call you, Bill? Yeah, or bring it here. So that's why we're coming here because I didn't know what the right way to go because this book was suggested to us, so.
Yeah, no, you can always pick up the phone and talk and if you don't like the answers you get, you can go somewhere else, you know, above that. But that, the only way things are going to get done through our staff and is knowing, communication, knowing what's going on. And I've, I've reached out to to your president several times.
So so I think just to 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 end that, end that portion, I think I'd like to arrange um, you know, facilitate a meeting with with our executive board and and you, Bill, and potentially, I believe it's uh Clay. I think does a lot of the groundwork that Jim talks with and.
If you can make those during the day so we could have our supervisor there.
Okay.
And the union guys that are going to do work and stuff. It's, it's always better for us to go out and and actually see what exactly you want done and what we can and can't do.
Okay, yeah.
Listen, I'll meet you Monday over there if you want, Bill.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know about the schedule.
Call him.
Yeah, great.
Call him.
Now, he'll be like out of the welcome mat here.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, I I appreciate your time. I don't want to take up more of your time, um, but I do thank you for listening to us. And I do, as we said, the fields are fantastic and it's not, you know, it's just a way to possibly divert water so that the field gets less water during these downpours and an opportunity to maybe use uh Columbia to be Memorial a little bit more frequently by where the girls by adding this batting cage and having AOK to do it without any type of issue would be, it's kind of what we're bound with.
And would you, would you mind sharing an operating budget of the Little League with us? I don't have that, but we, you have that.
Uh, yeah, I can ask the treasurer for something, bring that to the board and we can discuss that, sure.
Because we always hear about how you have no money and there's no money being made at the concession stand. And, you know, and then we have, I, you know, parents want extra porta potties and that costs money. So there's got to be some give and take in what we do. Right? I mean, we supply one porta potty, you want another porta potty in a washing station, maybe Little League pays for it. So I'd love to take a peek at the the whole operating budget and see where money is going in the Little League. If we're going to go into this as partners.
Okay, that's fair.
Well, we.
You see our money, we don't see yours.
Going back to when I was there, we used to have to submit our budget every year.
Right.
To Parker Rec.
Yep. I think that practice hasn't been done in a while.
Years, yeah.
Why is Little League forced to pay those bills when the high school uses it as well?
What bills?
Well, if you're saying that that should be a shared cost between the town and Little League, where does like, does the high, the high school teams would be using that porta potty or, you know, I don't know, how does that get divided up? Know what I mean?
Sam's gonna have to.
I see what you're saying. Well, I think the high school doesn't have the ability to use the concession stand and make money. Yeah, you can go around and around on this.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just curious, I didn't even know how it was all divided up. Especially in terms of you're going to charge somebody for a porta potty, you know. How's that, I don't, whatever.
How do you, how do you want to do porta potties if we ask for 20 grand, we get 10 and they went from $38 to 170?
Yes, I understand.
It's money, it's all about money.
I understand these to get paid for. My question is, hmm, what's a fair way to divide up the cost is what I was thinking.
Yeah.
You know, if the high school's going to use it too, do they pay a piece of it? If Little League's going to use it, they pay a piece of it? I I don't.
Well, what we're doing now is putting a porta potty at each sporting facility. So then if you want more than that, someone else has to pay for it and we don't have it as a town.
Gotcha.
Do they have pay for it?
Pay for it.
Quarter.
Bring a lot of quarters, Tom.
There you go. I think it's recommended.
They may have some electronic swipes though.
There you go.
Some swipes.
And then porta potties get vandalized that this weekend. We get at Mill Palm, they got a call at night from the police department and they get vandalized and it costs $83 to pick it up, then we have to pay for the damage. The porta potties two years ago at Mill were lit on fire. They caught the concession stand and cost us $110,000. Fixed it, fix it. So, you know, there's so much, it's it seems so easy, but it's really not. Um, at Elizabeth Green, they just got knocked over, so $83 each porta potty for the company to come up and not pick it back up. You know, there's, there's so much, it it seems so easy, but it's really, really, the simplest things become difficult.
Bill, I got a, I've got a question because I'm giving this porta potty and toilets and all that stuff. If there's not a Bitcha Football game here, they're not allowed to use the bathrooms, is that correct?
You you mean the the bit, the real bathrooms at the, at?
Right.
I don't think I've ever said nobody can use the bathrooms, no. But I, you would need keys or fences.
Yeah, you need keys and everything.
Yeah.
And who's going to clean them and?
Well.
I could see Bitcha Football going out their heads, hey, we gotta clean it.
Well, we cleaned it.
Yeah, well, whatever.
Yeah. Well, that's, I mean.
But I I don't ever recall, is that what?
We a little hidgy, happy about that? I mean, is if we gave you the keys to get to the bathrooms of the of the stadium? Causes some other trouble, but. Well, yeah. Maybe it's cheaper and maybe it's easier to do porta potties, I don't know. But again, it's something we have to consider.
Yeah.
Well, they're not on septic tank, either one of them, right?
No. Right, we change.
Yes, it's a long, I don't know, long walk, you just walk. We have a person raising their hand on Zoom. Okay, I don't know if their hand is still raised.
Go ahead.
Did someone have a question on Zoom? No.
No questions from Zoom?
You have to unmute them. I know the Tim Jones always has difficulty with those things. You have to unmute them, I know the Tim Jones always has difficulty with those things.
Well, then I guess we leave it at, uh, you have a meeting with your executive board, Bill? Is that the way you wanna leave it?
I can work with these guys, they know what they want, I mean, pretty simple to put up, um, gutters on a ring, kind of, thing.
She says they can't hear you. You have a. They can't hear us? She says she's muted. I don't even see her.
Can everyone hear us? On Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see the other two participants. Hello. Oh, yes, okay, there she is. There you are. There, you got it, thanks, bye.
Hello?
Perfect, now we can hear you.
Perfect, hi, everyone, my name is Daniella James, I'm sixty-eight Pickens Drive. I am also a, um, executive board member for Newington Little League, so I do wanna start off by saying thank you to, um, to you guys, I know that there's, you know, uh, that you guys probably hear more complaints than the thank you, so I do wanna, I do wanna express the thank yous also, um, your grounds crew is phenomenal and they do a great job, so, so thank you for all you do, um, I, I've been listening and so I just wanted to clarify a few things, um, as far as the bathroom situation goes, so football's bathrooms are locked, I believe. Um, Park and Rec, um, man's those bathrooms, so they're the ones that open, open them up. Um, they're locked most of the time, unless football's playing, so. So, so there's that, the other thing, and they're all the way on the other side of, of the softball field, so, so there's that. The other thing is, um, the baseball bathrooms are on septic, um, so I don't know if. Okay, we have. Okay. Okay, I know we just cleared out our septic a couple of years ago, so, um, so that, you know, neither here nor there, I just wanted to wanted to put that out there, um. As far as Wallace goes, I know, I think it was clarified that both intermediate and minors team play there, um. There were about twelve teams in total that played there last spring, so, um, so that, that field does get used a lot. That's it, just wanted to.
Thank you. You wanna break this off now, Bill, let this, uh?
Yep.
Let's go with you. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the, uh, letter from, uh, Pamela Avery.
Yep, that's, uh, from, the, um, motorcycle ride, and she was just thanking us for using the park and having all the fees waived.
Okay, and then there was an email from the Girl Scout troop, uh, Room five and nine.
Yep, they did a, oh, a Life Being it mural on the wall at Mill Pond Pool inside. It came out nice, I believe, is Nancy going there?
I am.
Yeah, Nancy's our rec supervisor, just if anyone doesn't know that, um, she just started with us and Nancy, I think you went over there and met the Girl Scouts today at five thirty. And I think Mike Phelps' wife, right, was one of the Girl Scout leaders, or whatever they call them, and Lily, I think, did some of the painting, is that correct, Lily?
She's not.
Oh, okay. So anyways, um, so we got, came out really beautiful and everybody was happy and I think some girls got certain merit badges or awards, silver awards or whatever.
Yeah, they're, um, they're, uh, they're bronze award, so it's, uh, bronze, silver, gold for, uh, for Girl Scouts. And then, um, gold is the equivalent of, um, Eagle Scouts, so bronze is the first step in that process that they're working on there, um. We'll talk to her for the very long, very serious, but they're, um, they have, they're, they're a very service-oriented troop and they're, you know, working on other projects and I'm sure they'd be happy if you had other suggestions to, to work on and maybe take some under advisement for future projects.
Is that what that pretty little penny, Sonny?
Uh, do you have the pen on there, Lily, or no?
Not yet.
No.
Very soon.
Yes, thank you.
And Chairman Batalico, I have, um, an additional correspondence that was sent to the department after the agenda was brought down to the town clerk's office. And it's to the Newington Parks and Recreation Board of Directors and Staff submitted for and to be read at the October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. From Kersy Casner Burr, parent of Newington Little League Participants and Newington Little League Publicity Chairperson. First of all, thank you for all, excuse me, first of all, thank you all for what you do for our children of the town. I grew up in Newington and feel that it is the best place to raise a family. In preparation of the spring sports season, I would like to bring to the table the issue of portable restrooms at the Clumamere Sports Complex. When there is not a game on the turf field or at volunteer field, the public restrooms are not open, leaving event attendees for the entire complex to use, uh, to use of only one portable restroom with no ability to wash hands, except with the provided hand sanitizer. This is unacceptable. Understandably, cost is an issue, however, those that use the facility, especially softball players, would appreciate additional facilities and possibly upgraded facilities be considered. Additionally, I would like to ask the Parks and Recreation Department to relocate the chosen facility to a location where the unit can be secured. I was witness to teenagers pushing over the unit with a young person inside. Luckily, the young person was not physically hurt, there needs to be a way to stabilize the unit so that it cannot be tipped. At the beginning of the spring two thousand twenty-two season, the portable facilities at many fields were delivered and then removed. I inquired about why they were removed and I was advised by a Parks and Recreation staff member that it was a cost issue. The units did eventually return, however, sanitary facilities are not something that should ever be removed. When facilities are not available, other undesirable locations are used, woods, dugouts. I am sure everyone agrees that this is not acceptable and just gross. I thank the Board of Newington Parks and Recreation for taking the time to listen to the citizens' concern and I would appreciate a response.
Thank you. And I did respond to her in writing and provided that to you guys, so. Um, you know, we'll go through budget process and I'll make a push again for for more money in porta potties. Not much, this is a rocket science. This is zero-based budgeting and this is keeping your budget up, you know, your taxes down, that's, that's what this whole thing is, and after you do this for three, four, or five years in a row, guess what, it, it's.
Oh, yeah, right now, you're on it, one, one in every field, right? Apparently, they're looking for more than one.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to the monthly report, anybody have any, uh, questions on the monthly report? Okay. How about the tree, uh, board report? Still taking down trees?
Lots of trees today, yep, and one at the garage and a couple on the streets today.
Apparently, we have no business. And the next item is the King Lacrosse Tournament, October sixteenth.
Yep, this one happened Sunday, um, it was a, a, a big success. It came from the Plymouth-Boston area of Massachusetts, they loved the facilities when they came here during the other lacrosse tournament that that Oregon Spur Time Maryland ran. And they, they wanted to use our facilities and, um, they had less teams show up than they anticipated. And I needed to renegotiate the deal. So we thought that it was a, a smart idea to give them a credit instead of a refund, so that they would come back next year. And they were happy with that. And, uh, so we, we have thirty-two hundred dollars on account and I was looking for formal, uh, you know, to confirm that commitment, I had to do it because the time was of the essence, um, they told us on Thursday and the, the event was Sunday.
Did they tell you before or after you?
Uh, they were, we were in const, every day, we were in constant con, uh, contact with them, it was kind of a catch and go, but we didn't do the other fields on the softball side of things. And we just concentrated on the four at the north side of the high school.
Mr. Frank Alino, would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the new terms of the King's. The administration reduced the field rental cost from eight thousand seven hundred to five thousand five hundred, the amount of thirty-two hundred dollars will be credited for a future tournament next year.
Give me a second.
Second.
All in favor or any questions before we vote on, all in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion passes. Next item, no, it's the Water Land Tournament Festival at Mill Pond.
Yep, this is just a request for next year, um, they enjoyed their stay here again for three times, so they want to make it a fourth. And as long as you guys are okay with it, I'll start negotiating, uh, some new prices.
Okay. Rich, wanna read the motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the Waterland Festival to be held at Mill Pond Park on Saturday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, with details to be negotiated by the Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. In addition, to approve the Parks and Recreation Department staff to apply for a state liquor permit and sell alcohol as a fundraiser at Mill Pond Park events.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Both, motion passive. Okay. AARP, uh, Connecticut, oh, community's grant.
Yeah, Bill, yeah, just, uh, you getting money? No, we didn't, nothing ventured, yeah, nothing ventured, nothing gained, we tried to get a pickleball um, program here inside the gymnasium for the whole winter in the amount of five thousand dollars, but the, uh, we didn't get it this time. Kind of didn't anticipate getting it because they gave us over two hundred thousand for the outdoor exercise equipment and they gave us five thousand for the thing la, uh, last month. So, but we figured, you know, why not, let's, it's worth a try, yeah. So, we'll be ready for it next year if they give out the money again.
Okay, uh, B and M Tree Service.
Yeah, just thought, um, I thought I'd bring to this, you know, you guys get a lot of complaints, I thought I'd bring something nice to the table. Uh, B and M Tree Service does a lot of tree contract work for stuff that's hard for us to do in dangerous situations. And we had, um, a person on Main Street, I don't wanna give away the name or anything uh, for sensitivity purposes, but let's just say there's a resident in Newington who's down and out on luck, uh, had this big giant tree. It ended up being on private property, normally we would not put our staff on there on private property. Um, Keith Javon, uh, being the way he is, sensitive to people's needs, said, you know, try to make something happen. He got in contact with social services, they were willing to give us, I think, eighteen, a thousand dollars, something like that. But, but it's, this was a big tree, this was probably a three, thirty-five hundred dollar tree. Uh, Clay Pedego talked with B and M Tree Service, explained the whole situation, the guy said, the owner of the company said, what are you, what's going on, tell me what's going on, he said, well, I could get some money from social services, I can do this. He says, after hearing that, I'll just take it down for free. And, uh, he, he did, so, so I thought that was
That was nice.
Very worthwhile and I couldn't say enough good about B and M Tree Service. If you recall during the Life Being it extravaganza, they gave us two thousand dollars to have, uh, the skydivers come in. Um, so, there's a co, uh, contract service that, you know, we're proud to be partnering with.
Okay, how about the Scarecrow Contest, October fifteenth?
Yeah, we just, uh, we had, um, ten scarecrows and you saw them outside here and everybody could vote on Facebook and we'll, anybody in Newington votes and we'll, we'll give away some awards, the businesses get a two hundred and fifty dollar um, advertisement in our brochure and the families win. First prize in that category is a hundred dollars worth of programs for Parks and Recreation, so. It's a fun little thing, uh, we were hoping more people would participate, but we got off because of COVID and stuff, but we're back on in the swing of things and we'll see how it goes.
Okay, any questions? Next item is Beechwood Park.
If you drove by Beechwood, you saw the contractors out there and were, um, building a new, a new playground, so we got shipped, uh, actually the twenty-first, they get shipped, it takes about seven to eight days to get here and, uh, it's gonna be quite nice and people are gonna enjoy it very much. And it's just, this is the one where everyone has a specific, like, we had bocce courts at Beacon, this particular park is going to have, uh, two sets of cornhole, permanent cornhole boards, uh, made out of concrete with paper bricks on the throw zone, so it's gonna be quite nice. The Eagle Park design has a pickleball court as their extra little feature, so. We're trying to make every neighborhood park unique, so that when Newington residents wanna participate, they can bring their kids from park to park and there'll be something just a little bit different for each child.
Well, my baseball field.
Uh, the baseball field got finished, if, if anybody wants to drive by and take a look at that high school field, it is mint. And it's the first time trying, um, four hundred and eighty different uh, plate bricks, uh, to be used at home plate and at the pitcher's mound, so, uh, we're experimenting with very high levels of, uh, service to the, to the high school. Youth baseball pro, uh, basketball program. This one, uh, we just wanna, I wanted to go on record publicly, hopefully on TV and on Zoom and everything else, that we have a deadline to register for basketball, youth basketball, everyone, please listen. There are no excuses, it's Friday, eleven o'clock. On the eighteenth.
So, Thursday, November third is the last day of the early bird pricing. And then prices go up slightly after that and registration ends on Friday, November eighteenth at eleven o'clock AM.
And is Tim Mankey and Kim Rada still here?
Kim's there, yes.
Okay, if you guys could please help us get that on the council meeting when you do your reports? Because we don't want parents going to mayors and town council people and commissioners saying, oh, but like, I forgot about the reg, I didn't know about it. They also got it mailed to them at school in their backpacks through the Maureen Brummett. And we also have it located in writing in five different locations and documents that we have. So, we're covering ourselves all the way around and.
Bill, if you, if you could just send a, a copy of the flyer or the, the notice to the, to James, he'll put it on our packet, so it'll, it'll actually, the flyer will be part of the packet.
That'd be great.
And then we'll, we'll mention it at the end of the meeting.
Excellent. Thank you, guys.
Next item is the cleanup at Churchill Park.
Yep, um, we're doing some cleanup work, uh, Don and Jay met out with, uh, met with us and we're doing some things at, at the lower pavilion and we've got some, uh, chips and mulch and we leveled out the back parking lot, so, and we put up eleven lights through facilities. So, a lot of nice things are happening back there and, and very inexpensive, uh, mostly just labor.
What, what are we doing with the algae?
We're, um, we, we, we cut all the weeds down around it and then now we're having, uh, Connecticut Pond is treating the, the water, both Mill and Churchill.
Okay, so we don't need you every year?
Uh, we don't.
We don't.
And the guy told us to turn it off for now, but, yeah, yeah, it, it will go back on, well.
There's a lot of people have asked me, why isn't that thing running?
Yeah, we're gonna take it off, we're gonna take it out wintertime, right around.
Okay. Okay, the next item is Night of Lights, December third?
Yep, December third, you're all invited, it's gonna be fun, uh, you get to sing as a board, you can sing with the council, depends how many people show up. But it's, uh, it's a fun time, uh, Councilman Mankey always sings that, he always shows up.
Kim and I will be there, we'll take, we'll hold our part.
Okay, all right, the five, uh, the five golden rings, the fire department has asked for already for the Twelve Days of Christmas song. So, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll have some fun with it, the preschool kids will come and play their instruments for one song. And we're gonna select a, um, a preschooler from our program here to help Santa Claus turn on the lights and, uh, and with the mayor. So, it'll be fun and, uh, lots of entertainment, all kinds of things, we're still looking for, uh, one or two more sponsors, one for Big Daddy's Racing Cars and another one, we're trying to get some, a live animal petting zoo to be there on the, at Main Street, so. Um, if you know of any businesses or anybody that wants to donate in return for advertisement, we'd be happy to, uh, to help them out and they help us out.
Okay, the next item is the Town Council Presentation.
The council people saw this already, I think, I, I, for the sake of time, I'm not sure it's worth, uh, going through unless the, the the board wants to, or if you wanna watch it on channel sixteen or fourteen.
I don't know, Sam, you wanna, maybe we can blow through real quick?
Okay, yeah, all right, we'll just go through it and then it'll be fast. Don't you just read the queues to him?
No, let it, okay, okay, fine, yep, okay. This went to the
We talked about this already. Those were two seven thousand dollar donations from Cedar Ridge and Mike, your surgeon, the total cost was fifteen grand each. That was like three hundred fifty-eight thousand, no, Project Jay's been trying to get accomplished for twenty-six years or so, thirty years?
Yeah.
Yep, that's starting now, as I said. That's the design that you guys voted on some months ago in regards to Eagle Park. Mill Pond got fixed up Eagle Park and uh Beechwood. Be beacon, I'm sorry, beacon. That, they wanted to know what we did, you know, as this year went on, so that was the Memorial Day one and the June one. Yep, that was uh Jordan Oakes. That was a fun time. Fundraiser. Yep, and then. The board made me do that one. That was uh, that was fun. Yeah. You guys know about the Shavaganza. That was a giant success, some three thousand lanterns sold and probably six or seven thousand people there. Then we just talked about that. Yep. We're gonna be accepting an award for that program. We're kind of proud of that. That's statewide, one of the best programs. You know, if anybody asks on Facebook, does anybody use the two pools? Yes, we do. And the way we count visits, let me just make sure we're clear. I come in the morning and I visit, that's one. I come in the afternoon and visit, that's two. Still the same person, but two visits. Uh, five hundred kids this year after COVID, biggest numbers ever, uh seven, five days a weeks from. We extended the hours from seven thirty in the morning to five thirty. Yeah, it's just, it's so great to see the preschool here. They're having a great time and they use the gym, they use the playground, they use the pool. And they visit the library in the part, in the police department, so it's really fun. This week is fire prevention week. So the firemen came in and they have all kinds of activities. It's really, really uh. Makes me feel good coming in in the morning, listening to these little kids. Exercise, education, recreation and cultural arts. We're teaming up with the board event and every other Tuesday. For Teacher Tuesday, the kids are are bussed from the four elementaries and the two middle schools. And we bring them to the community center here and they have all kinds of activities. They do their homework, they get a snack. Good time. We do that through Life Magazine. Um, the deal does a great job with that in our office and all the other staff. Help um. Make sure, contribute to it to make sure it's, it's accurate, fulfilled. We did about thirty-three concerts, I think, thirty-four this year at the Middle School Parking Lot and. The uh Mill, Mill Pond, Thursday nights, Sundays, twelve to three, and Saturday nights, five to eight. Uh, it looks like Keith, during his report, asked the council for head nod and a. Con- not a confirmation, but a uh support, should we go forward and book the. Next upcoming years concerts and I think the, it was a yes agreement. I don't know how many people. I don't know, Tim, was anybody against it and?
I don't believe so, no.
Yeah, it didn't sound like it. Yeah, we're trying to, we built our own greenhouse. We're trying to plant flowers and we have like uh. All kinds of planters downtown and all around the businesses and we're just trying to beautify Newington with the resources that we have. Um, like I said, with B and M Tree and our old guys, we're tree complaints all the time. And not that it's a bad thing, it's just something that needs to be done in a town is to, you know, maintain their trees, their street line trees. And a lot of people don't know that we're in charge of leaves, grass, garbage and snow. For the schools, the firehouses, senior disabled center, library, government center. Uh, all the museums, um, not museums. What do you call the Kellogg City House? I guess it's a museum. Um, historical houses, thanks. Yeah, so. You know, just an idea of how busy West Meadow Cemetery is. Not only do we maintain it, fertilize it, aerate it, but we have to sell the graves, we have to dig the graves. Work with the funeral homes and then we have the Center Cemetery and then the Church Street Cemeteries to maintain, so. The guys are busy, uh, two guys are busy almost every day working on cemeteries. That's something we work with New, Newington Memorial and it's children that have died, you know, way too early, uh, too young and it's just kind of a. A nice but sad uh ceremony. So, you know, we have thirteen park guys. If you take two out every day doing the cemetery work and one that, one guy doing garbage, there's three. And then you uh start to try to mow Little League fields and lacrosse and soccer fields. You know, all of a sudden, and and a guy's out on work with Tom and a guy is sick, it doesn't take much to figure out that it's uh, it's a busy place. So, that was given to the town council. Um. Couple days ago, Thursday was it Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. So, that's it.
Anybody else have any comments? Suggestions or? I got one. I, I. But a few people asked me about this uh. Library parking lot. What's the story there?
Um, well.
I know that there was talk about giving tickets if you park there. How, how do they know that? You know.
Yeah, well, what, what happened um? Is during the concert, I think most, basically concerts is the, the, the rub. And we, we have signs being made now, A-frame signs that we can put up that says special event parking. This way, push them towards the police department, the bus garage. There's, there's parking here. It's just that people don't wanna walk. You know, they, they see that they can walk right across the street. Um. Also, we made arrangements with OFI for next year to use their parking, but again, I'm not. Optimistic that people are gonna park there and walk down the street. And um. That's, that's.
The ecstatic that I'm getting from people is how can they tell us not to park in a public parking lot? You know, what do you say to them?
I know, I know.
You know.
Yeah, well, there's one parking lot that the library does own the property. Um, we do plow it and maintain it and take care of it and all that, but. Um. The, the library's position, I think, if I'm, I don't wanna speak for them, but I believe they wanna say. Their staff and their people should be able to park close to their, their library, to the building. So. If you go get a book or something, that's, I think that's the rub you're getting is, how do people know I'm gonna buy, get a book or not get a book? Yeah, I don't.
Well, you know, just.
Yeah, there's no easy answer. I think.
Couple of people questioned that and uh. Question, how can they give you a ticket if you park there? You know.
Yeah, I, I don't think any.
I said, I wouldn't worry about it.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I don't, to my knowledge.
What else you gonna say?
No tickets are gonna be, or have been given out, to my knowledge.
Plus the handicap parking is in the area that supposedly for library patrons only, which.
Right.
Do that.
That, that's a federal law that I, I did ring out to the police chief and to the. The library people and the, in the town manager. That, I would be, I would be very cautious about. Yeah, oh boy, I'd stay way away from that one, because that's an ADA law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Yes, Tom. Question about parking. Um, the center of Newington, yep. The municipal park is, parking is whose domain? I know Highway does the snow removal, right?
They do the, the, the black, we do the white. So they do the asphalt, we do the sidewalks.
Okay, and then on Main Street. On the, on Main Street side, we do that. The, the parking spaces, I mean. Who's, who's in charge of the, that actual parking area?
In front of roosters and stuff? Yes, yeah.
Um, let's see.
All the way down, yeah, all the way down. Let me be sure I got this right. On the, on Cedar Street side, the businesses have to pay for this snow removal on the sidewalk. In front of roosters, um, no, I think we, uh.
Yeah, I think, I think Highway, you know, I know they, they go in, in there and.
I think we do the sidewalks on the front for some reason, and I don't, I don't know why, actually. But don't quote me on that. I have to find out the answer for sure.
Okay, cause. You know, what, what has come up uh is a couple of things through TPZ is um. A-frame advertisements.
Hmm.
Okay, so the um, the sidewalk is. That's in front of the buildings. Is that town property or is that?
Business?
Belong to the, to the businesses? And are the stone walls? Um, are the stone walls? Uh, a town asset?
The stone walls are a town asset because they just paid for a company to come in and fix some of them that someone bumped into.
Okay. Um.
And we do do the trees and the flowers there, so. I mean, I'm gonna guess right now, it's, it is our responsibility.
Okay, because uh what has hap- happened is uh, we had business owners that. Were parking their vehicles there twenty-four hours a day and using it as a billboard. Oh, okay, and it uh, it seemed as though. Try and find out who is in charge of that, uh, you know. We finally, you know, it finally got, got rectified. Um, but uh, yeah, so I, I was just curious who. Who was there and then I, I'm just looking forward as far as the A-frames. You know, uh, what might be going on there, you know? And.
Um, you're gonna allow A-frames?
Eh, well, they're, they're allowed now, you know, but you, you have to get a permit for them. And uh, that's one of the things that uh people are, you know. They're, they're looking for A-frames and that they would take in every night. But um, you know.
Something to consider. Room, yeah, just, just to give you a, a trend that's happening across the country under the ADA laws. Are that the A-frames in the signage for outdoor dining is interrupting people that use wheelchairs. And uh mobility issues, not being able to get around the sidewalks anymore. That's a big deal.
Okay, yeah, that's.
And it's just, you know what, it's, you know, it's, everything that seems so simple always ends up getting to be affecting someone else.
Yeah, yeah, it's uh, you know, when that was brought up as far as the A-frames, you know, where are we talking about? Are we talking right in front of their stores?
Yeah.
Where that would be definitely a problem.
West Harfords getting killed right now by the ADA people because of their sidewalks and their A-frames.
Okay, yeah, and where the Frank, are they talking about the A-frames going out and. See, and to Main Street, you know, yeah. You know, and that's, that's state property, right?
Right.
Yeah, so that's, that's an issue there.
Thanks, okay.
Yes, nothing's easy. One solution brings a new problem.
Any other comments? If not, we're entertaining a German motion.
I propose a motion to adjourn.
Second.